We'll read you a brief notice concerning the COVID-19 provisions that we've made in our procedure. Due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, the zoning board of adjustment is authorized to meet electronically. The city of Concord will be using the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting by following the following link. That is slash forward slash forward slash U S zero two W E B dot Zoom dot U S slash J slash six one zero nine one nine three one eight. Or dialing the following number and entering the following ID number at the prompt. Telephone number is one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. And the webinar ID is six one zero nine one nine three one eight. Please enter your full name when logging in so attendance and minutes can properly be recorded. Note that the telephone participation will be enabled at the end of each public hearing. All participants, keep your phones and computers unmute unless speaking needs. Members of the public can also email questions or other public testimony to code C O D E at Concord N H dot gov. And staff will read the testimony or question into the record during meeting. Any member of the public can also call the code administrative office during the meeting at six oh three eight five six three nine one three. And if they're unable to access the meeting and if assistance with connected is needed, they can secure that through calling that number. Materials can be requested from the code office, code administration division zoning office via email or by calling and leaving a message at six oh three two five eight five eight zero. Or meeting agendas and links to the cases can be accessed at forward slash forward slash W W W dot Concord N H dot gov slash two eighty. That's two eight zero slash zoning dash board dash of dash adjustment. We will be hearing, I don't believe we have anything but variances this evening. We have one other question, which is a determination of regional impact. We will follow our usual procedure, which is to say we will call the cases with one exception in the order in which they appear on the agenda. And ask the appellant to come forward and be sworn in and offer any testimony that they would like us to hear in support of their appeal. We request that if at all possible, they can find their testimony in ten minutes. We will then solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who is in favor of the appeal. And following that, anyone in the audience who is in opposition to the appeal. We request that those testify, those people testifying from the audience could find their testimony, if at all possible, to five minutes each. Following the public testimony, we will check in with code enforcement to see if there's any further information coming forth from their office. And then if any testimony has been offered that seems to bear factual clarification, the appellant will be offered the opportunity to provide that clarification, not new arguments, prior to our closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. Under most circumstances, the board will act on each case prior to moving on to the next one in the agenda. Now, the first case we're going to hear this evening is case eighteen twenty-one. And the reason for that is that the applicant is requesting an industrial, to construct or remodel an industrial building over an aquifer. This requires a determination on the part of the board. And the applicant has also requested that we then table the appeal so that it can be heard or recess the appeal so that it can be heard next month when counsel for the appellant is available. So the case is eighteen twenty-one Laura Hart's Esquire for Three G Eagle LLC. The applicant wishes to renovate an existing industrial building into three industrial flex tenant units with an automotive repair facility, which is principally used J four and five as a tenant. And requests, oh, as a tenant, and request a variance to Article twenty-eight three six Aquafer Protection District, Section B three, uses prohibited, item N, automotive repair servicing or automotive bodywork permit such automotive repair service and bodywork where such use is not allowed for a property located in at twenty-five Hennecker Street in an R in an I N industrial district with an Aquafer Protection District A P D overlay on a portion of the property. And I'm going to ask Craig to, before I invite the appellants to step forward to fill us in a little bit on the details of the determination we're being asked to make. Or not?
Yeah, I'm not sure the appellants are here or not. Like you say, they weren't necessarily.
Have they not emerged?
No, yeah, I'm not sure if they were planning to be in attendance for this part of it since it's really mostly the board. So here, let me share a screen with you. So this is the subject property here, number twenty-five Hennecker Street. And the hashed outline area here is the Aquafer Protection District. So the purpose of the determination of regional impact is so that if there's anything proposed within one municipality that would have an effect on an adjacent municipality, they'd be given opportunity, public notice so that they could come and speak and respond to. And it's, you know, we have to send a notice to the affected municipality as well as a regional planning commission. And so here, here's what we have. You have the aquifer up here. It doesn't show on the Pembroke side of the thing. The Pembroke wellheads are down here just to the north of what would be Manchester Street where it crosses the Sioux Cook River. And even though we don't carry our GIS over into Pembroke, the aquifer lines pretty much continue in a spanning, you know, line coming down towards the low point, I believe, over in here where, you know, the wellheads are all located. So that's all in Pembroke. It's all on the other side of the boundaries. So then I think this, this is one that, you know, could easily be anticipated to have a regional impact where it could affect the drinking water for the community.
Craig, is that a, is that an RSA that requires us to make this determination? Or is that just like a compact between the towns?
Nope, it's a state RSA thirty-six, I believe it is.
Yes.
Just thirty-six?
It's thirty-six. I think it's fifty-four.
Thanks.
So the reason for this request, and we have encountered this before, I think in the same neighborhood.
Yeah, you had the Banks Chevrolet up on Manchester Street several years ago. And I believe the one for Integra Drive came before you before they withdrew their case on that, that one.
And the appellant requires, is it a variance from the board or is it?
It'll be a variance to permit the automotive repair and service work over the aquifer, well, within the Aquafer Protection Overlay District.
So the criteria for deciding whether or not we think it has a regional impact, which is to say whether or not we should notify Pembroke essentially is whatever the board thinks on the basis of its common knowledge?
Hey Craig, you'll stop sharing your screen. I can read it. I actually have it pulled out.
Great. And, and the regional planning commission has offered some written guidance on it too, which basically says if there's any question whatsoever, it should be determined a D R I. Go ahead, Laura.
So it's the relative size or number of dwelling units, which obviously isn't an issue here. Proximity to the borders of a neighboring community, which is transportation networks, anticipated emissions such as light noise, smoke, porters or particles. And here's the big one, proximity to aquifers or surface waters which would transcend municipal boundaries and shared facilities such as schools and solid waste.
Okay. Now, they are required, Craig, as I understand it from reading their application, to take various measures to ensure that any toxic substances that might get into the water supply are contained?
Yeah, and that's all defined within our ordinance. You know, the amounts of hazardous materials they may keep in containers, limited amounts, you know, like five gallons. And then, you know, what really, they cannot keep. And then they have lists of uses that are not permitted. And the automotive repair facility falls within those lists.
I don't believe I recall a case where we were asked to make a determination without hearing from the appellant.
They, they have submitted it in writing or, you know, in discussion with me, so. It, he, and I'm not sure if he's, yeah, he's not here. But yeah, no, I think, I thought they were going to be here. There must have been some confusion. But there's no reason you can't proceed without them.
I'm, I'm prepared to make the motion to provide the notice because the only, they would only be arguing against it. So they, they give up their right to argue against the notice, but it doesn't.
Oh, no, I think he's talking about the people representing the appellant.
They, they only, if they wanted to show up and argue that they shouldn't get the notice, they could come. They obviously.
Yeah. Oh, they're in agreement. Yes, sorry.
Yeah. So, and, and frankly, it seems like a pretty low threshold to make the decision since it's an aquifer district. To me, it seems, it seems pretty straightforward. They, we just should provide Pembroke the notice. And if they want to take a position, then they could come to the next hearing.
All right. It's been moved. Is there a second for that motion?
I second it.
Is there further discussion on the motion? It seems the cautious thing to do. And it gives Pembroke a chance, if they have any interest in this case, to speak up on the subject.
I just, I should disclose that my firm represents the town of Pembroke, but they've not contacted me at all about this issue. I didn't know that this was going to be an issue tonight.
Well, if you don't consider it to be a conflict of interest, then.
Not yet.
If, if we all excuse ourselves from every case where we knew somebody, we let us be here. All right, we have a motion on the table and a second, I'm going to poll the board, starting with Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
And Ms. Specter Morgan.
Aye.
Mr. Monahan.
Aye.
Mr. Winters.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. I would also like to hear a motion to adjourn the meeting until, well, I guess we have to, is there a time limit, Craig, on when, how long Pembroke would have to respond?
Yes, I mean, we, we have to notify them twenty days, I think, prior to the public hearing. So yeah, the recessing to the May seventh or May fifth zoning board meeting would be the preferred action.
All right. Do I hear a motion? Does that affect?
It's removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll start the voting poll then. Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. Winters.
Aye.
Mr. Monahan.
Aye.
Ms. Specter Morgan.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So the hearing is adjourned and we will go back then to the top of our agenda this evening, which is case eleven twenty-one, Bob Harbor. The applicant wishes to construct a ten by twelve foot, two-story addition, two hundred and forty square feet plus or minus on an existing non-conforming residence and request a variance to Article twenty-eight eight four C one, expansion of a non-conforming, of a non-conforming use to allow the expansion of a non, to allow of a non-conforming. I speak English as my native language, but occasionally I lack fluency. I think there's a glitch in here. Anyway, expansion of a non-conforming use to allow the expansion of a non-conforming use where each use, where such use is not permitted for property located at nine Broken Bridge Road in an I N industrial district. I, I think we all understand what we're being asked to consider. Is there someone here? Is Mr. Harbor here? Or is there someone here representing him?
Okay, you're fine. Go ahead.
I'm here. I'm Bob Harbor. I'm here.
Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, Mr. Harbor?
Absolutely.
Would you fill us in on the details of why you believe a variance is appropriate in this case?
Um, I'm getting older. My daughter and her husband have agreed to move in to help me in my elder years. The house is not that big. And it would really help to allow us to have a full bathroom upstairs and larger ba, enlarge the bathroom downstairs. So that's the reason for the.
And why are they in violation here, Craig? Is it because the use itself, a house isn't permitted?
Went the wrong way there. Yeah, the property lies within an industrial zone. I can just bring that up here. So the house is located on this lot right here. And all the gray area that you see is all industrial. Down at the end of Broken Bridge Road is a great deal owned by the gas company. They have their training facility here, testing facilities, fuel things, you know, piping systems and collection system. So, yeah, it, it's very much industrial down here. And these are just two of the last residential uses that are accessed off of Broken Bridge Road.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like us to know, Mr. Harbor?
Well, I, I mean, I don't see, see, when I, when, when the house was built, it was a residential neighborhood. And the gas company's building across the street wasn't even here when I bought the house. I'm just asking to put a small, it's going to have absolutely no impact on anybody except a great benefit for me. I worked hard to own a home in Concord and I would just like this small concession so that I could continue to live in my home that I paid for.
Are there any questions from the board? Anyone? Thank you very much, Mr. Harbor.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition to it?
Okay.
Was there someone who wanted to be heard?
No, sir. Everything's quiet.
Okay, very good. Thank you. With that, is there anything, a comment from code enforcement?
No, I don't have anything additional to add to this.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a request for a variance to add a bathroom on the first and second floor of an existing house. We heard testimony that the house has been overtaken by events in that it's in a zone that it wasn't, was not intended for residential use. And it was built before that zone was established. Do we have any thoughts on this? How about you, Nick?
Well, you know, looking at the, the plans and so forth, if, if this was in a residential area, they wouldn't come to us because they meet all the criteria in terms of setbacks and everything else. I think the hardship has developed over the years because of the changing conditions of the district. So I'm inclined to approve this.
Andrew?
Yeah, I agree. I think if they're, you know, if they want, if it was a large addition or a real increase in the use, but it's pretty minor and it's really just supplementing the use that's already been in existence, I think it would be, it would be unreasonable for us to deny that this pretty modest change.
Yeah. Yeah, I tend to agree. I think the, um, the property was overtaken by changes to the, the zoning of it. So it's a, a condition not created by the owner. So I'm, I'm perfectly fine with it.
Laura?
I agree. I think this is, is close to a natural expansion of a non-conforming use as you can get. So I have no issues with granting this variance.
I also agree with my colleagues in support of motion to approve. Is there such a motion?
It's removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I think I heard a dog somewhere back there.
Sorry, that was me. Somebody came into my house unexpectedly.
Ah, I, I thought perhaps he had something he wanted to say.
Not at the moment.
Oh, okay. All right, let's take a vote then, starting with Ms. Specter Morgan.
Aye.
And Mr. Monahan.
Aye.
Mr. Winters.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The variance is approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That brings us to our second case this evening, case twelve twenty-one, William Young. The applicant wishes to establish the subject property as a buildable lot and request a variance of Article twenty-eight four one B, minimum lot size, and Article twenty-eight four one H, the table of dimensional regulations to permit the development of a property with ten thousand square feet of land where the minimum lot size required is twelve thousand five hundred square feet of land for property located at thirteen Drew Street. That is map block six oh three slash Z one forty-six slash slash in an RS residential, single-family district. Is Mr. Young here or is someone representing him?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. John Arnold from Hinckley Allen. I represent the applicant, William Young Properties. I believe Mr. Young is on the video as well.
Very good. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Why don't you fill us in on why you believe a variance is appropriate here?
Thank you. So the, the property here, I don't know, Craig, are you able to pull up a GIS shot of it or anything like that, just to get oriented? Thank you.
Yep. So here's the, that's the lot right there. Drew Street running north and south, Chase Street running east and west. As I said, that's the subject lot here.
Thank you, Craig. So the, you can see the property is located at the corner of Drew Street and Chase Street. It's a, it's a square property, roughly a hundred feet by a hundred feet. Total of ten thousand square feet for the lot area. The, the minimum lot size per today's zoning is twelve thousand five hundred square feet. So the property is just barely shy of that, twenty-five hundred square feet. The property has a somewhat complicated history, beginning in the nineteen forties when the prior owners, the Donaghy family, first purchased it. And at that time, the minimum lot size was eight thousand square feet. So the lot was a legal conforming lot. In nineteen ninety-nine, Mrs. Donaghy passed away and her son inherited this property and also the adjacent property to the north, which is eleven Drew Street. And at that point in time, the zoning ordinance had been amended and the minimum lot size had, had increased to twelve thousand five hundred square feet. So the law was a pre-existing non-conforming lot at that point. Also at that time, the zoning ordinance had a provision which provided that any non-conforming lot in common ownership with an adjacent lot would be automatically merged into a single lot. So when Mr. Donaghy inherited this property in nineteen ninety-nine, he was unaware of that provision and he shortly after inheriting it, sold off the, the house lot, eleven Drew Street that has the house on it right there. And a few years later, he sought to build on the subject property that we're here about tonight. And at that point, the city advised him that because the lots had been automatically merged in ninety-nine, they'd become a single, a single lot at that point, and he didn't have any right to sell eleven Drew Street separately. So his conveyance of eleven Drew Street in ninety-nine constituted an illegal subdivision. And the subject lot no longer had any pre-existing non-conforming status because it had, it had been merged with the eleven Drew Street property and then illegally subdivided in ninety-nine. Mr. Donaghy in, in two thousand and four applied to this board for a variance from the lot size requirement based on that involuntary merger and then subsequent subdivision. But the board denied the request on a narrow three to two margin. The property sat vacant since that time. Mr. Young, tonight's applicant, bought the property in twenty-ten and now he's just seeking to put a, a single-family home on it. And now he's just seeking to put a a single-family home on it. Uh as you know, the threshold um matter to hear this application tonight is whether there's been a material change in circumstances since the two thousand and four application. The most significant change since that time is the enactment of a a couple of statutes regarding involuntary mergers. In twenty-ten, uh the legislature amended RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine A. Uh to prohibit involuntary mergers and prevent municipalities from merging lots without the consent of the lot owner. Uh and then in two thousand and eleven, the legislature enacted RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine AA. Uh which requires municipalities to separate lots that were involuntary, involuntarily merged by operation zoning. So had had these statutes been in effect back in ninety-nine, the outcome likely would have been much different. Because had the lots never been merged, the subject property would have retained its pre-existing nonconforming status. And the two thousand and four application wouldn't have been clouded by the idea that the owner had illegally subdivided the property and created this nonconformity. Additionally, there there have been some clarifications and refinements to the um the variance criteria since two thousand and four. Specifically, the public interest and substantial justice criteria, which also weigh in favor of uh hearing this request. So um these changes in the law, coupled with the passage of nearly seventeen years uh since the last application. We believe constitute a material change in circumstances, um warranting a uh a new review of this application. And I'm happy to pause at this point, Mr. Chair. If you want to have a discussion or a vote on that point before I proceed to the variance criteria, but I'll do what you please.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. I think perhaps we ought to. Uh members of the board, do you have thoughts on uh whether or not this consists of uh essentially meets the criteria for a new, a new hearing? Ms. Specter Morgan?
I do. Um in twenty-ten, the unnecessary hardship criteria were substantially changed by the legislature. So I think between two thousand and four and two thousand twenty-one, there's been a material change in the law.
Mr. Monahan.
I agree.
Mr. Winters.
So is it, I guess this is a question for for Ms. Specter Morgan a- a- and or Mr. Arnold. Is that, so you're saying basically after that decision, any variance can can be reviewed? Or or would it have to be that the original zoning board decision? Might have been different. In other words, some zoning board decisions are gonna be so obvious. When the new court decision make a rule, it can't mean every single possible decision can be renewed again.
I think it does. There's actually a Supreme Court case out there, Brand Development, that talks about how not only was the unnecessary hardship criteria tweaked. But between two thousand and four and now, there have also been um judicial reinterpretations of the other variance criteria. Um you'll recall back in two thousand and four, we had use variances and dimensional variances, and now we only have one variance. So I I think honestly, you'd be hard pressed to find a variance application from the two thousand two, two thousand and four timeframe that you couldn't rehear now.
Interesting. Mr. Wallner?
Uh, yes.
Andrew, I'm not sure you've got a chance to s- you asked a question. I think I may have tipped over your answer.
No, I didn't. I was kind of processing the information. I I saw that Brand case. Uh it may be academic because I'll I'll take Mr. Arnold's word for it that. That quote cloud of impropriety might have been a factor in the two thousand and four. Maybe impropriety is not the word. That cloud of may have been a a factor. So I think probably regardless, I I'm inclined to agree we should hear the case now.
Very well. Does someone care to make a motion?
I move that we find that this is a materially different application and hear the case.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All right, uh poll the board, Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. Winters.
Aye.
Mr. Monahan.
Yes.
And Ms. Specter Morgan.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. We will hear, proceed to hear the request for a variance. Mr. Arnold.
Thank you. Um Craig, can I impose on you one more time to pull back up the the GIS or the tax map, please?
Wait.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that looked pleasant. I liked that.
There we go. Stoddart, New Hampshire.
Thank you. Um. Maybe if you can zoom out one click, Craig, just to see some more of the properties on that block. Um uh with with respect to the um, the public interest criteria, there there won't be any change in the central character of the neighborhood. Or the impact of public health, safety, or welfare. The reason I wanted to take a look at the the GIS map is just to show that this this neighborhood was developed initially in the early nineteen hundreds. And um it's it's really defined by small house lots. You can see that they all, for the most part, have a depth of one hundred feet. And then they vary to some extent with the amount of frontage, but they're all small, square and rectangular lots. The the block that this property is on has two other lots that have the same dimensions on them, uh one hundred by one hundred, ten thousand square feet. That are already developed with houses on them. And several other developed lots uh near this property are even smaller. Some are less than five thousand square feet. Uh just across the street, there's one on the corner. Um and then a little bit further up Drew Street, there's there's two more. Um so putting a house on this lot will be consistent with the character of the uh the neighborhood. On the substantial justice and the spirit of the ordinance. This situation arose in in large part due to a a number of unintended consequences back in nineteen ninety-nine. When Mr. Donaghy inherited the two adjacent properties and the zoning automatically merged them. Uh while it's true that the spirit of the ordinance is to maintain um minimum lot sizes for purposes of separation and density and space. Uh the spirit also seeks to allow landowners to put their property to some reasonable uses. Uh we aren't proposing here to create a new substandard lot, which uh may understandably cause more angst. Um but instead, we're simply looking to put a long-established lot to a reasonable use, uh consistent with the other house lots in the neighborhood. On the hardship criteria, um there's a few ways this property is unique. Uh first, it it's a corner lot, so it only has two adjacent abutters. Um both of the adjacent properties exceed the minimum lot size and are already developed. Yeah, the property to the, essentially they're right on the screen, uh and the property uh above, above to the north. So both of those lots are um larger than the uh the ten thousand square foot lot size minimum and they're both developed. Um so that provides some adequate open space and separation between the immediate abutters. And the overall density uh for the three properties, if it were viewed as a whole, um would be compliant. Uh one of the other benefits for uh being on a corner is that the adjacent streets also provide some separation from neighbors to the south and the west. Uh this house isn't being tucked in with, you know, a direct abutter on each side. Um and third, very few, uh this is one of very few undeveloped lots in this historic neighborhood. And it's just barely shy of the lot size requirement. The difference of twenty-five hundred square feet uh really won't have much of any impact. Uh the house is gonna be modest in size. It's gonna comply with all setbacks and other zoning requirements. And prohibiting the use of this property would be unjust. Particularly given that the other surrounding properties in the neighborhood, many of which are the same size, many of which are even smaller, uh have all been developed. Uh so that's, that's essentially our overview or presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Yes. Ms. Specter Morgan.
Attorney Arnold, other than developing this property with a house pursuant to this variance, is there any other use that really can be made of the property?
I don't believe so, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Uh I don't see one stepping forward. Uh thank you very much, Mr. Arnold. And now we'll solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal. Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition? Is there any comment from code enforcement?
Um no, I think Mr. Arnold, Attorney Arnold, has uh laid out the history of this uh very accurate accurately. Um I would just say that the city is very supportive of of infill development uh for lots like this.
Chris, can I catch you?
Thank you. Chris?
Before you go, oh, go ahead.
Yes.
Uh there is a letter of support uh in the last page of the document submitted.
Oh, did I overlook it?
Well, it's way in the back.
Yeah, once you get past the colored pictures, I stop looking. We do have an email. This is from Christopher Knight. And he is in support, he he is, it's concerning, he's the owner of six Drew Street. And he is in support of the request for the variance. I believe that was the only. Communication like that on that app.
I'm gonna assume that's not the Christopher of the Brady Bunch.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion closed. And I'll invite uh discussion from members of the board. Ms. Specter Morgan, what are your thoughts on the case?
Uh I am in favor of granting this variance. Uh the public interest, spirit, and intent and substantial justice um criteria. All according to the court really focus on whether the proposed use would be consistent with the neighborhood, and this obviously would. Um it's not gonna diminish surrounding property values. And the fact that there is really no other use that can be made of this property absent a variance. Um speaks to the fact that there is some unnecessary hardship. So I would be in favor of granting the variance.
Mr. Monahan. Your mic is off.
I agree with Laura Lars, and she just asked a critical question, I think, which is, is there really any other reasonable use of this lot? And uh I think the answer is no. So I will um support the request.
Mr. Winters.
Yeah, I agree. And I think, I I think it's a relevant factor, at least to me, that there's obviously a very desperate need for new housing in Concord. And it'd be such a waste for such a, you know, such a uh a lot like this to go, to basically just be be vacant. And although it doesn't quite meet the 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 lot size requirement, it's it, the lot is a perfect square. Which I think really allows a developer to maximize the use. It doesn't have any like stray corners or odd shapes to it, which are basically wasted space. So so I agree.
Mr. Wallner?
I agree. Just wanted to note, uh on Drew Street, there are nine lots. Six of them do not conform by today's standards.
Very good. I agree with all my colleagues. I think the criteria for variance are satisfied. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, uh poll the board members, starting with Ms. Specter Morgan.
Aye.
And Mr. Monahan.
Aye.
Mr. Winters.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The variance is granted.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome. That brings us to the next case this evening, which is case fourteen dash twenty-one, Eric Stevens. The applicant wishes to expand the commercial indoor recreational facility, principal use C three. Established by variance under case forty-six dash twenty eighteen and add a residential dwelling and request the following. A variance to Article twenty-eight two four J, table of principal uses. To allow an expansion of the commercial indoor recreational facility by adding a new attached storage building for use in conjunction with the indoor recreation facility. And a various to Article twenty-eight two four H, multiple principal uses on the same lot. Permit a single-family dwelling be developed on the same lot as an existing non-residential use. The property located at sixty-three Bog Road, which is transected by an RO residential open space district. And an RM residential medium density district. Mr. Stevens, are you here or is someone here representing you?
Yes, I am. And it's uh myself, my brother Justin, and his wife Jennifer joining us.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Why don't you fill us in on why you believe that a variance is appropriate in this case?
Okay, uh this is Justin starting. Uh for those that don't know us, uh my name is Justin. This is my wife.
We lost, we lost Justin. We cut out for a second.
Okay, um can you hear me now?
We, we, the last word we heard was wife.
Okay, um we're the three owners of the barn at Bull Meadow, a wedding and events center, which opened in town last October at sixty-three Bog Road. Uh first, we want to thank the city for their help in getting our venue open last fall in spite of a global pandemic. And also to the zoning board for granting our previous variance in twenty-eighteen, which allowed us to make our dream of operating a wedding venue in Concord a reality. In the six months since we opened, we realized that we're lacking in two key areas, storage space and security. What we're requ- requesting from the city is approval to construct a thirty-two foot by thirty-two foot two-story garage to be used for storage. And to, and to allow for a constant presence on the property to ensure security. We need additional storage on the property for a few different reasons. The first is that we lost usable storage space in our building due to changes in utility and HVAC's layout. Um which was a cost-saving measure that we made to counteract our increased construction costs during COVID nineteen. We've also had to store many more tables and chairs than anticipated inside of our building. Because of the COVID nineteen guest count limitations and guest spacing requirements. Additionally, we've had much smaller weddings because of COVID nineteen. So when the weddings are smaller, we need to store all of our extra tables and chairs. We're currently exceeding the capacity of our storage space, forcing us to store items in our bridal suite. As well as outdoors exposed to the elements, as you can see in the image to the right. Thank you for opening that. We have been renting an offsite storage unit to assist with this, and we've been doing that for quite a few months now. But it's becoming very impractical to bring tables and chairs back and forth for each event on our personal trailer.
Um this is Jen. Um we uh believe that we need an onsite dwelling for two primary reasons. Um and that's a sleeping space as well as the security presence. On the days that we're hosting events, we work typically fourteen-plus hours. Um and need to be back there the next morning for tours, um or the start of any other events. Um so driving home after a fourteen-hour day is not really ideal. Um and having a place to stay onsite would likely be safer for us and for the public. Um additionally, Justin and I recently had a a baby boy as well. So having a residence onsite for our parents to watch uh our son while, you know, we're working. Allows for stability and a little bit more time with our new baby. As far as for our security presence, um since the construction began last spring, we've noticed a frequent presence of uninvited visitors. Sometimes it's just curious neighbors disregarding our trespassing signs. Other times, it's walkers and bikers using our private driveway as an access point to the rail trail, which runs down the middle of our property. We've witnessed people on our security cameras looking into windows, walking around the barn at all hours of the night. Um which does turn into an issue when we have a lot of our storage outside. The property itself is not visible from the road or from any of our abutters homes. Which really limits the ability of the neighborhood to help us keep an eye on our property. Um we've arrived in the morning sometimes and found broken bottles in the parking lot. Um not, you know, not related to any event that we've ever had. Um but broken bottles, damaged landscaping, um burnout marks or um snowmobile tracks, ruts in the driveway. Having a constant presence on the property would help mitigate a large amount of the damage. And proposed location of the garage is at a point where nearly all uninvited visitors would need to pass. In order to get to the rest of the prop- and the rest of the property. We have installed multiple signs, cameras, and spoken with dozens of uninvited desk, um guests. But the intrusions still occur multiple times a day. Even during wedding ceremonies, we've had to designate a staff to stand in our driveway to turn people away. So that way they don't interrupt a, you know, a private event going on. Eventually, we do plan on installing a driveway gate in the future, but we know this is only gonna deter vehicular traffic. Um and even then, you know, people can still walk down the, walk down the driveway on foot past a gate.
All right, this is Eric, and um I'm gonna speak about the unnecessary hardship on the property. The first thing I'd like to just talk about is the special conditions and in uh Rand Court versus the City of Manchester. The first thing I'd like to just talk about is the special conditions. And in Rancourt versus the City of Manchester in two thousand, the Supreme Court ruled that, um, after Simplex versus the Town of Newington, a hardship exists when special conditions of the land render the use for which the variance is sought to be reasonable. Our property has a unique shape. Specifically, it's large setback from the road. We have a fourteen-hundred-foot driveway, uh, which makes it perfectly reasonable to need an onsite security presence. The property is bisected by the rail trail, which essentially provides the public with access to the interior of our lot outside the view of Bog Road or any of our abutters. This also makes reasonable, if not necessary, to grant this variance to allow for enhanced security. There's no fair and substantial relationship between the zoning ordinance and what we're requesting. Strict adherence to the established zoning ordinance would not advance the purpose of the ordinance because prior to the granting of our variance in twenty-eighteen, construction of a single-family detached dwelling and a garage would both be allowed within the R O zone. COVID nineteen has resulted in a few impacts for us here at the property. It is one, led to restrictions on the wedding industry, which require increased spacing between guests, which limits the amount of furniture we can place in our reception hall. Is decreased, I'm sorry, decreased the average size of weddings, causing us to need additional storage space. And it has led to unexpected costs and decreased revenue, as well as uncertainty within the wedding industry. Um, and that has kept Justin and I from leaving our full-time careers, which also limits the amount of time we can spend on the property, um, performing security or just maintaining a presence. I'm going to speak now to the spirit and intent and public interest. Um, construction of a garage with a single-family dwelling above it does not interfere with any of the nine explicitly stated zoning ordinance purposes listed in section twenty-eight dash one dash five of the Concord code. In fact, granting this variance would bolster many of those purposes, specifically sub-paragraphs A, B, G, H, and I. Our proposed use of the land would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, as there are many garages and single-family dwellings throughout the neighborhood. The appearance of garage will fit the physical form and character of the neighborhood. And the exterior of the garage will be aesthetically pleasing and would not appear to be non-conforming in either the R O or R M zones. Constructing a garage with a single-family dwelling above it poses no readily evident threats to the public health, safety, or welfare. In fact, it will be used to help reduce the demand on law enforcement, which in turn will promote public health, safety, and welfare. Substantial justice. The existing business on the property is bringing hundreds of visitors into Concord every weekend. And we have and will continue to host award two elections annually for the city. We've worked closely with the city to become a benefit to the local area, and theft and trespassing on the property is making that more difficult. Allowing additional storage and onsite premises for the owners will cut down on this and will allow us to spend more time attracting more guests and aiding the community. We already employ some of the neighbors at the, uh, business, including a bartender, our landscaper, and our groundskeeper. And granting this variance would allow us to continue hiring necessary staff in the local area.
And finally, I'm just going to talk about the impact on the surrounding properties. The proposed location for the garage and apartment is not within eyesight of any of our abutters. Additionally, there will be no excess noise or traffic onto the property once the garage is completed. Construction of the garage will actually prevent unwelcome visitors in the neighborhood. And there's no reason to believe that adjacent property values will be diminished by the addition of this structure. So in conclusion, thank you all for your time in allowing us to present this request. We hope that you agree that our request is reasonable, not contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance or the public interest, will result in substantial justice, and would not diminish the value of surrounding properties. Additionally, not granting this variance would result in unnecessary hardship for us and our business, which we believe has already proven to be a valuable addition to our neighborhood and the city of Concord. Thank you.
Are there questions from the board?
I have a question for Craig. Is that appropriate now?
You bet.
Craig, um, it looks like in the application, the only reason this requires a variance rather than a special exception is because a variance was originally granted for the use. Is that true?
Uh, no, well, in the variance is because in the R O zone, you can't have a mixed use. You can't have a residential and commercial together. Plus, as the original was, uh, established by variance, this is now a change in the circumstances surrounding that variance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Chris, um, because I recall when this was before us in the past, uh, this is kind of a, uh, wet piece of property.
Yeah, there is some wetlands on the property. We have, we had to have some permits before we started.
Uh, do you anticipate any problems with, uh, location of the garage being challenged by these wet spots or?
I mean, the, 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 part of the reason why we're putting the garage where we are, or where we'd like to put it, is to avoid the wetlands. We have very few spots on the property that aren't wetlands, um, even though it is almost thirty-four acres and size. That's part of the reason why we're putting it where we are. And also, like Jen mentioned, just so that when, you know, it's at the beginning of the, uh, of our developed portion of the property. So we want to make sure we can stop, uh, intruders before they access everything else.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition?
Me.
I beg your pardon?
I would. Can I speak?
Okay.
Did I miss my?
Would you introduce yourself, please?
I'm Erin O'Toole.
Do you, uh, swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
What would you like us to know, Ms. O'Toole?
Um, I think this is a case of scope creep. I think, um, this could result in a huge enterprise. They're just trying to do it step by step. And I'm not buying the COVID, um, excuse. I think it's lack of planning on their part, not foreseeing the need for a storage space and security. And, um, that's it. I think it's scope creep. It's going to develop into something far bigger.
Where, where is your property relative to theirs?
Um, I have a rail trail. So I can walk five minutes and be next to them.
Okay. Is that Ms. O'Toole's lead?
Oh, yeah. Did you have an address?
Uh, yes, twenty-eight Americana Drive. And I think it's disruptive to the character of the, um, the land. It's a wildlife corridor, and now we have people coming in through the rail trail. And they've built a, uh, commercial enterprise with, um, traffic. And I think they should have anticipated security issues as well as building a storage shed. Putting in a residential home. What's going to happen five years from now? A pool, a tennis court, um, you know, under the auspices of a wedding venue. I can just see it getting bigger and bigger. And, uh, that's it.
Have you, Ms. O'Toole, since they've been operating, have you, have you noticed it? Any issues with like noise or, you know, traffic or any concrete disturbances?
Um, as far as concrete disturbances, I've walked the trail and I've heard the party guests, um. I don't monitor traffic. I only go out there, you know, um, every other day.
So you can hear it when you walk the trail?
Yes.
If there's a wedding, okay.
Yes, and I, I observed them having a wedding, um, I think it was a week ago. And, uh, it wasn't, uh, socially distanced. And, um, yeah, I could hear, I can just see this getting bigger and bigger. And I think that's what they're doing.
Would you be able to hear it from your home? Like if you were inside, do you think if they had a wedding?
If I was inside, probably not. If I was outside, uh, noise carries. It travels. And it is a, it is a, um, they call it Bog Road for a reason. So I, you know, they don't have, what did, what did he say? Thirty-six acres? But not all of it is buildable, but I doubt that. I doubt that. Um, my issue is with scope creep. I think the lack of planning on their part, they should have anticipated the need for a storage unit. They just didn't want to put it in the plans the first time around. And, um,
Ms. O'Toole, I think we've covered that ground. Is there something else you'd like us to know?
No, I've said it all.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, Ms. Specter Morgan?
I have actually another question for Craig.
Okay.
Does the garage actually require any relief or is it just the accessory apartment?
Uh, the garage, the storage building, it is an expansion of the use.
The use permitted by variance. Okay.
Exactly.
Mr. Chair, you have two letters in support.
I, I do. You're correct. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in opposition? I do have two letters. One is from Raymond Mercier, who is at eighty-one Bog Road. And he abuts the property. He's in favor of granting the variances. He has, uh, he cites some of the other characteristics or events that, the appellant mentioned in terms of problems with security and trespassing and whatnot. He indicates there's substantial area available to build, uh, residence on the property. And he sees a hardship. I also have a letter here from Mr. Timothy Blagden, who lives, well, he gives a P O box number from Warner, but he's a, uh, board president of the Friends of Concord Lake Sunapee Rail Trail, just the trail that goes through the property. He's writing in support of the request to construct the, uh, garage and apartment. In case that he is on the board of the trail which crosses the property, there's always a flow of people. But the driveway is long, main function facility can't be seen from the road. He's found the owners to be dedicated and professional. He believes that the garage will benefit their operation. The organization works hard to be an outstanding neighbor. And that's it for the mail, I believe. Any comments from Cohen Porson?
No, I think, uh, pretty much everything's been covered here. So if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
All right, Mr. Stevens, would you like to offer any factual clarification in response to anything you've heard?
I, I think the only thing I'd like to say, um, we didn't, you know, we don't, we didn't own the property yet when we had the variance hearing the first time. We didn't realize, um, the amount of traffic down the rail trail. The other thing is the rail trail was expanded last year. Um, there was no way to know back in twenty-eighteen that there was going to be this much traffic onto the interior of our property back then. So it, I, I mean, it, it was hard to anticipate the, that we would need anywhere near the amount of security. I mean, we have eighteen, twenty, you know, people onto the property a day that aren't, are uninvited. It's, it's, we'd counted that many in a single day. It's not one or two a week. It's, it's, no. I think that's, that's all we have.
Yeah, project creep as well. You know, this is our first large commercial venture. I don't foresee many more for us. But we're learning as we go. But I don't foresee us needing much more on the property beyond this. I think we'll be very content with this. We're learning as we go.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We've heard testimony that the, uh, owners of the property have considered the size and obscurity of the interior of the lot to be a special characteristic of the land. And they have testified that, uh, they feel that a residential use for security purposes, purposes is an important part of, um, operating the business, which they do there under variance. Mr. Wallner, what do you think?
Well, I think, um, certainly not granting the variance, uh, would be, I think, contrary to the public interest. I think the spirit of the ordinance is going to be observed. I think the hardship, um, I think I'm persuaded with the argument that there's been increased traffic that wasn't anticipated on the rail trail. And I think that that's going to continue to grow. There's certainly a great interest around the state of New Hampshire on rail trail development. So I'm inclined to be persuaded by the security argument and requiring some onsite accommodations to meet that.
Mr. Winters?
Can I ask another question of Craig? And I, I apologize, I might be making you repeat yourself, but I was kind of digesting. Is the, in, in terms of variance two, for the single-family dwelling, they could, if they, that would be allowed as a matter of right. The only reason why they need this variance is because they want to put it on while there's also a, uh, a commercial use at the same time. Is that the reason for this variance?
Pretty much, yeah. The, the, the ordinance, um, prohibits, um, more than one, anything other than a single-family dwelling on a residential lot in, in these districts. And, you know, like you say, the, the, the use was created by variance, essentially replacing, um, uh, the single-family, uh, use at that, at time. And then, so now to put the fam, single-family dwelling on there, yeah, yeah, we need the variance then to allow more than one principal use to exist on the property.
What, what's, I'm just curious, what's the rationale for that? Is it just sort of a, is it?
It, it, it's segregation of uses. You know, for the most part, a commercial use is not overly compatible with residential uses. If your neighbor started running a landscaping contracting company from his property with people coming and going all day and having equipment, that becomes, you know, very, um, disruptive for the, you know, the use and enjoyment of property. So, you know, it goes along with that aspect of it.
Could they, is there some use short of a principal residential use that they could say, put up some sleeping quarters or a kitchen there that they could use? If they had, you know, had a really long day, but it wouldn't be their principal use? Or is it sort of all or nothing? It's either, it's either a, a, a home or it's not a home?
Correct. I mean, if, if, if they're creating a dwelling, um, you know, which is self-contained and provides, you know, living, sleeping, eating, food preparation, and sanitary facilities.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Andrew, did you, uh, have any thoughts on this project?
So, to me, putting aside the whole mission creep or scope creep, I mean, that's, I'm not going to try to read their mind. If, sometimes that, it doesn't, in terms of variance one, that seems pretty consistent with the use that we'd originally allow, allowed. I'm honestly still trying to wrap my head around variance two. You know, they've represented one thing. I'm not, I'm not down the representation, but obviously if we grant it, that could be somebody living there year-round and just making it a house. Um, but on the other hand, is, there is something unique about this property that's pretty far away. The segregated use issue isn't probably going to bother anybody but them. So I'm inclined to support two, but I'm a little bit, I might hear other people's thoughts on that one.
Mr. Monahan?
Yeah, Justin, I'm perfectly fine with one. I think the extra storage space probably helps, uh, keep the property in orderly and, and, uh, in good shape. I think the adding the, uh, the residence space, I'm persuaded about the security issue. I'm also think it's in keeping with the character of that portion of Bog Road. It wouldn't be unusual to see a, uh, a residence there. I'm also reminded the fact that in recent years, uh, we had a similar security issue where we allowed a residential, dwelling on Hall Street as part of a, um, storage facility, for the same type of security reasons. So, um, I'm comfortable with approving both one and two.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
I agree that the storage space is sort of a no-brainer. I think if they'd asked for that with the first variance, the board probably would have granted it. As for the residential use, Andrew, I think I can help you because it is so rare that we have a case actually on point in New Hampshire. And in this case, we do. And I'm actually looking at a, a, a website right now, and your smiling face is smiling at me, Andrew, from the website, as well as from the Zoom meeting. But it's the U-Haul case from nineteen eighty-two out of Concord. And in that case, the owners wanted to put an apartment over, um, the garage facility for these exact reasons, for security and because it was twenty, sort of a twenty-four-seven business. And the Supreme Court held that it would be an unnecessary hardship to deny that variance and that granting the variance would do substantial justice. So I'm inclined to agree and grant both variances. I would condition the residential variance on it being occupied only by the owners of the property.
Very good. I'm inclined, inclined to agree with my colleagues. I think the, uh, I'm inclin-, inclined to agree with my colleagues. I think the, uh, configuration and location of the property both helped create a hardship. And I think the reasonable, uh, use criteria, uh, criterion is met with, uh, the house being there primarily for security reasons. The storage simply an extension of an already approved use. Um, with that.
Well, could I just, uh, make, make, make one comment here, though? And Laura, I, you know, I appreciate your, your reasons for putting that restriction on there, but it is relatively impossible to enforce. Um, but, you know, a, a request or rec, can, can, uh, condition that it be occupied by employees of the, um, property, I, I think would be legitimate and easily enforceable.
Thank you. Yes, that makes sense.
Thank you, Craig. With that, I'll solicit, uh, a motion from-
I apologize. I thought I heard the, um, the applicant say that it might be a family member or parents or something that are potentially living there to help care for the children. So I'm not sure that I'm even comfortable with the requirement that it be a employee.
Well, I have no problem with family members using it sort of during events to watch the baby, which is, is what we heard. But to the extent that anyone's going to be living there, if we're approving it for security reasons, I think it needs to be someone related to the business somehow.
Very good.
Would that include if somebody had, as a part of their condition of living there, had some caretaker responsibilities?
Yes. Yeah.
Would anyone care to make a motion?
Oh, I was gonna say, just for the record, you know, where, after that case that Laura read, um, we did implement a caretaker, um, apartments and allow them in, uh, industrial zones and a couple of commercial zones. And in those cases, yeah, it, it is for resident caretakers, so. Uh, but there's no restriction on who can be that resident caretaker, so.
Okay. Resident caretaker works for me. Is that just not permitted in this district, or are we back to the mixed-use thing?
Uh, it's not a permitted use in the R O district, correct? And it's accessory use in the I N district, too.
Thank you.
I'm desperate to solicit a motion. I've tried several times here. Failed every time. Would anyone care to make a motion with or without conditions?
I move that we approve both variances with the condition that the residential unit be occupied only by a residential caretaker.
Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All right, I'll pull the board, starting with Ms. Specter Morgan.
Aye.
And Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
And Mr. Winters?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Both variances are granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to case fifteen twenty-one. Christopher Galbraith. The applicant wishes to construct a twenty-by-forty-foot addition on the westly side of an existing single-family dwelling. And requests a variance to Article twenty-eight four one H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow a setback of not less than thirteen feet from the westly side lot line, where a side setback of forty feet is required for property located at seventy-nine West Parish Road in an R O residential open space district. Note, the property was granted an equitable waiver in two thousand and one under Case six on one to allow a setback of thirty-three feet from the westly side lot line where a forty-foot side setback is required. Is Mr. Galbraith here with us this evening?
I am.
But even Mr. Galbraith, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Would you fill us in on why you feel a variance is appropriate here?
Yes, uh, so I bought this property about three and a half years ago, knowing that, uh, the properties are pretty narrow. Um, I have just under six acres. Um, I did not realize until set, sending in this variance that my house was already granted a variance when it was built. So that was news to me. So that's why I was looking for twenty feet originally and then found out I, it was already seven feet over. Um, when I bought the property, it has a two-bedroom, um, in-law. And I actually intended on using that space on the left side of my house to, uh, reconstruct inside of my house, but since then, we've moved my mother-in-law in, and that's constituted about eight hundred and fifty square feet. So with a growing family, three boys, uh, our kitchen's about ten by eleven. So looking to put a twenty-by-forty family room, living room off to the right side of my house, looking at it right there where the arrow's at. Um, it's really the only spot that I can put it. Like, if I go out front, I have my septic system. If I go out back, we have full patio and um, some other stuff. And then the right is the parking area where you get into the garage. So really left with just that one area to put it. Um, looking to reconfigure inside of my house, making a bigger kitchen after that piece is done. So, um, I've talked to my neighbor, Art Ellison, and he has no objections to, uh, me going to his side of the house. Um, so I'm trying to keep it short and sweet for you guys. I know it's getting late, but, uh, that's really what we're looking to do is, we're not going to have any impact. If anything, it's going to improve home values, uh, just making our house more valuable. Um, we're not moving anybody in, more people. It's still going to be the same-sized family. So that's, that's what we're looking to do.
Mr. Galbraith, where's your well on your property?
My well is, uh, to write down a little bit with the arrow. Someone can move the arrow down a little.
It's in the backyard?
It's in the backyard, to the right.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Is the driveway next to which your addition would go the one that runs up to Mr. Ellison's house?
Yes.
Other questions from the board? Is this a two-story addition?
Nope, just one story. Um, I could share my screen and show you if, yeah.
I think there is a plan on your, uh, application. Rectangle that shows where it would go, anyway.
I don't know if you can see that now.
Yep. That's the addition.
Yep, looking to a cathedral ceiling addition and side elevation.
Got it. Okay. Other questions from the board? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Galbraith. Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from Code Enforcement?
No, I don't have any comments to add on this one.
And with that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We heard testimony that the, uh, lot is unusually narrow and that the, uh, owner would like to expand his house to within thirteen feet of the property line. He can't expand it pretty much at all without, uh, a variance, I believe. Is that true, Craig? Or?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the, the property pretty much spans the buildable land area between setbacks already.
The house does?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Start with, uh, Ms. Specter Morgan. What are your thoughts on this case?
Um, I think that given the narrow width of the lot and the location of the house on the lot, the, and given that there is no place to add on to this house without a variance, that there probably is an unnecessary hardship. I think it's not going to diminish surrounding property values, and I think substantial justice will be done. Um, with regard to public interest and spirit and intent, you know, the purpose of setbacks is to provide more spacing between structures. And again, given this house's location on the lot and the location of the houses on the abutting lots, that purpose is certainly fulfilled, even if the variance is granted. So I would have no issues granting this variance.
Mr. Monahan? Mike?
I think Laura captured it very well. I have nothing to add.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, it, it's, it's, there's still plenty of spaces between the homes and there's, Mr. Ellison's house is so far back, um, he'll have to drive, he's, he's gonna have to drive by the applicant's house regardless. It's not really going to make much difference for his view. So I, I agree.
Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, for that kind of acreage of this lot, it's an unusual configuration, having it as narrow as it is. So I think the hardship, uh, argument has been, uh, 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 well-established in my mind.
And I concur with my colleagues, one and all. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move that we approve the variance.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I'll start this, uh, round of voting with Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. Winters?
Aye.
Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The variance is, were there two or one? It was just one. The variance is granted.
Thank, thank you very much.
You're welcome. That brings us to case sixteen twenty-one, Hamilton and Pamela Munnell. The applicant wishes to construct a second detached dwelling on a single lot and requests a variance to Article twenty-eight two four H, multiple principal uses on the same lot, permit two single-family detached dwellings on a single lot when no more than one detached single-family dwelling is allowed on a single lot for property located at two thirty-six South Street in an R S residential, single-family district. Mr. Munnell?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth?
I do.
Would you fill us in on the details of your request?
Sure. Can I, can I share my screen? Is that possible?
Unfortunately, you can't. I can't help you with that, but others can, I think.
I think I-
Yes, you're perfect. Yeah, you, you may, you may go ahead.
Do you see it? Are you guys-
Yes, we do.
We do. Um, so, yep, we're at two thirty-six South Street. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. Um, so, just a little history, uh, what's going on in my, my family and, uh, what's happened the past year is that my, my mother-in-law passed away in the fall, and my father-in-law, who's eighty-five years old, is alone. And as a family, we've, uh, opted to take him in and have him live with us, and we, we have to try, we have to get him a place to live. Um, so these are the reasons, these, all these reasons are listed in the application. I'm just going to show you the picture of my, uh, unit or my, or my lot and kind of talk you through it. So this is, um, this is my house. And if you see, we're kind, we're, it's kind of, we're not in the middle of the, the lot. We're kind of over in the corner. Tough to build that this way, no room here. We go this way, we have to tear down the, the driveway and the garage. And if we go back, we have to tear up the patio, move the bulkhead and, and, and tear up the, uh, uh, sunroom. So we, it, really, the only place to put it is attached to the garage here, where it has plenty of space front uh, and side to side. Uh, it, it makes the most sense and, and economically is, is, fits our budget. Uh, this is just another shot of our area where, uh, looks like it's spring or late summer, where you can see there's natural borders on both sides of, of my lot. And then this is the, uh, plan. So this is the front of the garage. And the roof will be attached and the whole thing will be attached here. So it says I want to build a, um, a separate structure. In, in reality, it's, it's going to be attached to my garage, which is attached to my house with a small fence. Uh, you know, we are not, this is going to be for my, my father-in-law. We are never going to rent this property. This will never be a rental. It will only be for my parents, uh, in the, in the future and, and for Barry Gilfris, my father-in-law, uh, now. And he needs a, a ground-level apartment, um, uh, because stairs are not, uh, he's not able to do stairs at the moment. Um, this is just a picture of my house, how, how it is now. And so if you can see the architectural structure of it, is that we've connected the, um, main house to the garage with a little fence. And then it will go over here and it'll all be connected and it will look like a single-family unit. And that, and that's in the spirit of the ordinance and, and that's what it's going to look like. We, we care very much about what the property looks like and, and we want to make it look as, uh, as a single-family unit. And, uh, this is just another picture of my backyard, that the things that we would have to destroy in order to build it back here. That's my patio. We just put in about three years ago and the boat, which has been, to be honest, a lifesaver in COVID. It's been great. And then the bulkhead would have to be moved and the sunroom would have to, have to go as well. Um, this is just a, a part, this is our, another shot of our backyard and the, and the, you know, this is, that's a beautiful tree that we'd have to get rid of and, um, and the, you know, we lose the view and, and the back, back door, backyard access as, as we know it. Uh, so, those are the things that I think, thank you for your time. Uh, I can stop sharing now. Uh, I appreciate it. I, I keep it short and sweet, but, um, the, the, there's going to be no harm to the community if we put this up. And the, the harm that my family, it, it would be enormous. Uh, my family's really counting on this. So, uh, that's it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition to it? We do have two notes that were sent in by neighbors. One from Scott Spewack, who is, gives his addresses a P O box. But he says that he, oh, he lives next door at two thirty-two, and he's in support of the appeal. We also have a letter from, an email from Jimmy Broussard, who is at two thirty-three South Street, diagonally across the street from the residence, and they are in support. They've seen the plans and have no objections. Any comments from Code Enforcement?
Just, yeah, um, you know, points of clarification here, though. Yeah, I, I mean, i- i- it's an in-law apartment, but by definition, it, it is an apartment. Um, use cannot be restricted to any period of time or any individual. So i- i- it would, you know, always be available for rental if the property sold. So it, it is an apartment, so.
So, Craig, if, if the, uh, Munnells put a breezeway between the house and the garage, would the whole thing be a moot point?
No, um, two family homes, um, aren't permitted in the, the district. Uh, detached, um, i- it attached has to be attached through habitable area for it to be a, what we call the accessory dwelling unit. So it has to have a common wall and it has to have a communicating door, as I said, through, through habitable area. Um, a standard duplex has to have, you know, physical space. Yeah, a duplex could have a breezeway between them, I believe, but again, duplex was not a permitted use in this location either, so.
Got it.
Yep.
But Craig, his, the application talks about the accessory dwelling unit. Are we applying that, that standard or, or no? It's-
No. No, yeah, it's, yeah, irrelevant, um, due to the configuration here. So this is strictly a variance to allow a second dwelling, two-unit, um, dwelling on the property, a second detached dwelling, I should say, yeah.
So, uh, can I ask the applicant a question, Chris?
Sure.
So having, so I assume you thought about, there's no way to attach it through it, through a quote, communicating wall is, is put. There, there is no way for, for you to make this a full attachment and, and avoid the, the double dwelling problem?
Are, are you speaking to me? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, it, the, in order to do that, we, we, we've gone around this around, you know, we'd have to demolish the backyard and tear up all that stuff back there, and, and it kind of locks us in. Uh, we lose, you know, the, the scenery back there. It's a beautiful sunset every night. We wouldn't, we'd have a hard time getting, we'd lose all our outdoor living area, you know, and, and have to rebuild a whole, all that stuff. And it would kind of lock us in. You know, we will, if you want to put a provision, I'll never, I'll never rent that place.
We can't, yeah, that's the problem.
This is just so, you, you, you know, we're hanging on this, you know, this is, this guy needs a place to live. We gotta-
And, and, uh, just to be clear, I'm no way insinuating that you would, and I trust your, you, you to your word. I'm just saying that once it's existing, uh, if, when you sell the house, the next people would have every right to rent it out, so.
It's, it's going to look, it's going to improve the neighborhood. It's going to look beautiful, uh, you, you know, visually and, um, we're not going to do any drought, you know, it's going to look the same. You know, we're just trying to get this guy a place to live.
Any other questions from the board? I believe that concludes the public testimony. I, did I solicit testimony for, for, and again?
I think you got two letters, too.
Yeah, those I did read. So we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a request for an attachment of an A D U- We have a request for an attachment of an A D U to the side of a garage, rather than to a house, which makes it effectively a second dwelling. We've heard testimony that, uh, there's no other good place to put it, and that the function of it is, uh, as an A D U rather than as a second home. Discussion. Laura.
I was unfortunate enough to be involved in the A D U statute development. And my understanding of the purpose of the common wall and the door was really to make sure that the property owners sort of could keep a handle on what was going on in the A D U, and it wouldn't get out of control. Um, it related primarily to our college towns, um, and situations of over occupancy there. Here, although the A D U is not going to be attached to the home, it is attached to the garage, which is right next door to the home. And it does seem to me that it would be a hardship to have to destroy the back of the house and the sunroom and the patio to put the A D U there. I don't think it's gonna diminish surrounding property values, I don't think there's a benefit to the public from denying the variance. Whether or not it's attached to the house, it could be rented out in the future, so that's really sort of not an issue in my mind. Nor are the personal circumstances of the family, unfortunately, but given the uniqueness of the property and what's being requested, I would have no problem granting this variance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I also support it. Um, I also think that there's a lot of logic to A D Us being on the ground level, um, so people aren't climbing up downstairs above garages, so, um, for that reason, and for what Laura outlined, I'm supporting, supportive of the request.
Andrew.
You know, this is a really painful case for me, because I, yeah, I, I completely accept everything that the applicant is saying, and, um, yeah, I have no doubt in, in, in the most sincerest of intentions. I just have a really hard time approving a second dwelling that's completely detached. I think that's really out of the, the character. And I think if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, the difference is that with an A D U, it could be rented out in the future, but it, it has to be owner-occupied. Whereas here, there'd be no restrictions on future use indefinitely for any future owners in the future, they could rent it out essentially as a second de, a second detached dwelling, dwelling in very close, you know, proximity. So, I, I have a hard.
Andrew?
Yeah.
With an A D U, my understanding is that either the principal dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit has to be occupied by an owner, but either or, the one that's not can be rented out, but perhaps I'm wrong, Craig?
No, that is correct, that's how, uh, that was allowed, um, through the RSA, and we incorporated it in our ordinance.
Oh, e, one of the units has to be owner-occupied?
Correct, yes.
Okay. But.
But that's for the A D U regulations, the A D U regulations aren't applying to this property at all, so.
Right.
Okay.
Nick.
Well, I, I think it's senseless to make them try to tear down their, their patio and backyard. And the only other option, if you want to have a common wall, is to tear, tear down the garage, attach it there, then put a garage to the, the side of it. So, I think that's, that really creates an unreasonable hardship.
I'm inclined to agree with my colleagues who are in favor of the appeal. I think, looking at the, uh, design, the building attached to the garage, there wouldn't be any doubt in anybody's mind that that was an A D U, which means that from the point of view of the impact on the character of the neighborhood visually, there wouldn't be any. And I, I can't imagine, uh, that anyone would construe it as a second house on the property. So, I, I don't, uh, I feel that from that point of view, it's inconsistent with the spirit of the, of the ordinance. And the arrangement of things on the property has frequently been considered by the board to be a characteristic of the property that will justify, uh, claiming a hardship. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move that we approve the variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded, further discussion. We'll start the voting in that case with Ms. Becker-Morgan.
Aye.
And Mr. Monahan.
Yes.
Mr. Winters.
Aye.
Did you say aye, or nay?
Nay.
Nay. Uh, Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The vote is four to one, with Mr. Winters in the minority, and the variance is granted.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thanks so much. I, I, and, and do I just, I'm sorry, do I just, do I, do I get something? I'm not sure how, but the next.
You'll get a letter.
You'll get a notice of decision.
Yeah, we will send you a notice of decision in the mail within, in the next week. Um, and of course, there's a thirty-day appeal period, um, if anybody wishes to appeal the decision, so.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. All right.
The last case on the agenda this evening is case nineteen twenty-one, Michael and Jennifer Leon. If I'm pronouncing that incorrectly, I apologize. The applicants wish to construct sixteen by twenty to addition on the east side of an existing dwelling, and request the following: A variance to Article twenty-eight, four-one H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, permit an eleven-foot setback from the easterly property line, where a fifteen-foot setback is required, and a variance to Article twenty-eight, four-one H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to permit a total lot coverage not to exceed fifty-one percent, where a maximum lot coverage of forty percent is allowed. This property is at twenty-nine Wood Avenue, in an R M residential, medium-density district. Where's Wood Avenue?
Uh, it's in the South End, uh, right off Broadway, in Broadway and Bow Street.
Thank you. And Mr. Leon, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
Can I tell the truth?
I do.
And did I pronounce your name correctly?
No, you did not. It's taken me, it's taken me, uh, forty years to get to this, but if you put an L before the boy's name, Ian, Leon.
Leon.
Yep. At least that's what my father says, so.
Well, your father wants to know.
So, uh, yeah, so here we go, kind of take it away here. Just a little bit about myself first, I was, uh, born in Concord in nineteen eighty-one. My parents bought this house you see on the screen share in nineteen eighty-three. So, I was about one and a half when I moved in here. And, let's see, about five generations of South Enders in the family here. And, uh, my parents, my sister-in-law, and my in-laws, and all have homes without a block of this house here. Little bit about the neighborhood, many homes on Wood Ave, uh, have been in, own their homes for several generations. The appearance, the quality, integrity of the neighborhood incredibly important to me. Uh, my wife Jennifer and I take great pride in the curb appeal and condition of our home. Uh, it is extremely common for homes to have much smaller setbacks than our standard, and smaller than I propose. Uh, only a few homes on the street meet standard setbacks. Many setback variances have been granted to the houses surrounding mine. So, project scope is, uh, at a third bedroom to our two-bedroom house. Bedroom will have a master bath, two small closets. Uh, home addition will extend off to the left from the street perspective, and the post-construction square footage will be about fifteen hundred square feet. Uh, foundation will be full basement, um, standard specifications there. And the new roof line will, uh, tie into the existing gable and look natural to the home. Uh, so here we have a, a quick overlay. I don't know if you can see my mouse here, probably not. So, in yellow there, in, in Microsoft Paint, with my great artistic capability, I gave you just a, a brief idea of, of where the addition is going to go. But I guess the reason I pull up this photo is just to kind of look at some of the surrounding homes on the street. Um, so I'm at twenty-nine there, and Wood Ave is, uh, just to the north, as you see. Uh, if you go to thirty-one Wood Ave, you'll notice on both sides of that house, the setbacks are uh, anywhere between seven and eleven feet. Uh, if we keep going down the street to thirty-three, uh, we see about a four-foot setback there. And the, uh, the heart that's, uh, uh, abutting that four-foot setback is actually an addition itself. That's a great room addition that was put on about, uh, twenty-odd years ago. Uh, directly to the rear of my home, um, on Hope Ave, uh, the property has, actually has two dwellings. Uh, the, the main dwelling is only a few feet from the property line, but the secondary dwelling, which is a two-story, two-bedroom, uh, is about eighteen inches from the property line. Uh, and as we work our way down the street, we see that with, uh, that larger property that, uh, has a barn there, very close to the, uh, to the property line. Although it's not a dwelling, if you look next to it, to the left, at their dwelling, that four-season porch, uh, that was installed within the last several years, was also granted a variance for there. And, uh, again, on Wood Ave, many more examples of this, if you zoom out on this photo, which I, I don't have, this was sent to me by one of your colleagues, I even see example after example of this over and over again. Uh, so this is the initial drawing that I sent over, uh, from my building permit. You see the two bedrooms in the rear of the home, which are the, the two that exist now. And then off to the left there, there's a master bedroom, uh, which is just a couple of feet, or one foot internally larger than the existing bedroom. So, not too much larger, a slightly, slightly larger master, with a three-quarter bath and a couple of closets there. Uh, something I just want to point out about this photo, or this drawing, is that my setback, as you see on, on the left there, I've measured, uh, an eleven feet, which is what is in the variance requests. It's really about twelve feet, maybe twelve and a half feet, but I'm not interested in paying a surveyor to, to come out. Uh, so I wanted to err on the side of caution here. So, so that's what's in the paperwork, but the setback is a little, is a little larger than that, you know, honestly. So, this was sent to me, again, by one of the folks down at the city, I think Dave Hall, just kind of an overview here. And so, the reason I added this is if you look down, uh, kind of south in the photo anyways, uh, you'll see that the, the overlay is, uh, puts the, the stone retaining wall on my property, and I know this isn't an official survey, but it's the only reference I have, so, uh, the, the only reason I'll point that out is to, uh, to get here. So, uh, when I measure my eleven feet, I'm measuring about where the fence post is. However, uh, I actually own over, over to the wall there, so that's why I'm saying this actually is a little bit more than the, the variance requested on the property. Uh, so, a quick little mock-up here, uh, from an architect downtown that's been working on this. Uh, on the top here, you see where the addition is, however, that's setback about thirty feet from the front of the home. On the bottom foot, you can see where it actually ties in, um, to the rear, and it's just that, um, that smaller gable that would protrude, the, the front roof line would look absolutely original to the home, uh, would tie into the existing gable and side porch of the home, so it would make no difference to the roof line, it would just extend the existing roof line about sixteen feet. Uh, here you see the, where the two properties come together. I don't know if it's really possible to see it, but in the photo, uh, about halfway through that section of fence, there is a, a great stake in the ground, it's, it's kind of blurry to see there. So, you can see there's a, a good twelve feet to the property line, and then, on the other side, in the neighbor's property there, uh, the Murphy's House, uh, they, they have about twenty-five feet till they get to their house. And that, that garage they have there is actually further back than what the new, uh, addition would be. So, they, they don't actually line up together, they'd, they'd be diagonally from one another, about thirty feet apart. Uh, so there is another element of this besides the eleven or twelve-foot setback. The variance is gonna require an increase in lot coverage, um, in this zone, I think I'm an R M, forty percent is, uh, the maximum lot occupancy. Uh, from what I can tell from research, lot occupancy is largely about neighborhood dens- density inconsistency, open air space. Uh, there's also, uh, certainly some information about, in there about water drainage. I, I'll be eleven percent over that forty. My in-ground swimming pool occupy fourteen percent of the lot, so, uh, it's flush to the ground. Yeah, most people don't know that it's there, because I need to have a, a six-foot tall fence around the pool, it's a privacy fence around the backyard, so, uh, I don't see, uh, certainly for the, the, uh, neighborhood density aspect of this, I don't see there being uh, any issue with my lot coverage, because fourteen percent of the lot isn't, it isn't a structure, it's not raised above ground, and it's not noticed by the neighbors. You know, there is, there is that water drainage aspect, I'll say, um, you know, the first thing I noticed about that is if I go a couple streets away, this percentage goes up and, up and down, and, you know, on Stone Street, it's fifty percent, on Allison Street, it's about sixty, and as you head downtown, it's around eighty. So, although I know the drainage is necessary, if, if the ordinance were just about drainage, that, that number wouldn't be a variable, it'd be pretty consistent. That said, I happen to be lucky in my situation, Wood Ave is a nice pitch in the middle of the road, and, and my property was about where that pitch was adjusted. So, I have a, a berm around three sides of my property, that's about eighteen inches tall. Uh, so as you see here, uh, there's a grade in the grass anyways that works down toward the road, and my iPhone doesn't take great pictures, but as you get about a foot from the road there, it drops off about eighteen inches all the way around from the front to the side, and even in the rear of the lot, uh, is about a ten-inch drop-off. Uh, so, there's never been water drainage issues here. Because of this berm, my, my foundation's actually, uh, a foot or two higher than most of the homes on the street. Uh, so there's certainly no basement water issues, and, and there's no pooling in neighborhood yards or anything like that, because of the, uh, the brilliant structure of those who created this road probably a hundred years ago. Neighborhood impact, the addition will not change the view, access, or general aesthetic of the area, the addition will follow existing roof line and look natural to the original home. Uh, bringing my home up to a three-bedroom will increase the value and square footage of home, making it more comparable to others on the street, thus improving the neighborhood consistency and value. Most of the homes on whatever, at least three, some are four and five-bedroom, uh, and then there's a couple smaller two-bedroom homes. Uh, the addition will be toward the rear home, the curb appeal of the house will be virtually unaltered. Uh, and why? Uh, we love this home like a part of our family. I grew up here, I moved in here when I was about a year and a half old, it would be very sad to leave. As my daughters grow, we will need more space for them to live, study, feel comfortable, uh, at home into their college years and beyond. Uh, my wife and I both have hybrid work jobs, uh, where we require office space at home. And certainly, we're planning on elder care in the next several years, as all the grandparents live within a block or two of us. So, there's many needs to, uh, beyond just a bedroom, to bring this home above eleven hundred square feet. But certainly, uh, at the time, it'll be used for my children as they go into middle school and high school and, and beyond, so. Without approval, we'll be forced to leave the home, my family has been in for three generations, to fit growing family with space needs for the present and the future. Moving will take us away from our neighboring families. We have designed the family's geographical structure to provide convenient care for children and elders as time goes on. There are virtually no homes available on the market, and not being able to make alterations to the property would unnecessarily saddle me with family, financial, and long-term logistical hardships. Uh, if this variance is approved, I will have the space to keep the home and my family for more generations to come. It is truly my desire to hand over this house to my children someday, uh, but without enough space to get them through their teens and twenties and to care for aging family and members, we will need to move. Uh, the proposed project will look natural to the home, and not impact any existing views, land use, or neighborhood density. I have the approval and support of all my direct neighbors, uh, my wife and I take great care and pride in the home, uh, and this addition will be no different. The, the last element of this for me is a bit of a elephant in the room, and, uh, that is that I was granted a permit by the city of Concord about three and a half months ago, or three months ago. I sent in that drawing that I showed you early on in the presentation, and, uh, some questions went back and forth, and, uh, I was granted the permit. It came in the mail, and I paid for it. And after financing the project and hiring contractors, the building inspector came by and noticed that he had made an oversight on my setback. And so now, I'm happy to be here with you all at the zoning meeting, but, uh, I would have rather had come here before all these logistics had been put into play, and, uh, I had leveraged my future for this project. So, uh, I understand that those things are not considerations in this process, but certainly, uh, I hope there's a little empathy available somewhere. And that is the duration of my screening tonight.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Leon, is this currently a two-bedroom home?
It is, yes.
Is that, uh, characteristic of the neighborhood, two-bedroom homes?
No, uh, not particularly, I mean, there's a couple on the street, but there's three-bedroom, four-bedroom, and five-bedroom homes on the street as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Could Craig just put up the, the satellite view, if you have it handy?
There you go. Do you need the, uh, what, the aerials on? There you go. Do you need the, uh, what the aerials on too? Let's see, 29, so this, this is the property right here, the center of the screen.
Yeah.
And then I can put on the aerials also.
Ah, perfect. Thank you.
Then I have another view of it here too.
Okay.
He's Craig, that's from before I painted. You're gonna put something newer there.
You must have just painted it because these are supposedly 2020. Yeah, these would have been.
I like the blue better.
Ju- just before the painting.
Well, yeah, I, I do too. I had to convince my mother that it was a good idea though. She was quite particular.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Leon. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of the subpoena? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition? I do have a couple of emails. Uh, one is from Judith Bryant. He, she lives at 28 Wood Ave and, which is across the street, has no objection to the appeal. And, uh, another one is from Sarah and Gabriel Cohen, who live at Wellwood Ave. Their house is diagonal from the Leon's house.
Yeah, the numbering's, the numbering's all messed up there, Chris. The, the, that house is pretty much across the street, just so you, just so you know that 12 is almost right across the street from 29.
Okay. Uh, the, they have no objection to the addition construction and support the requested variances. Any comments from Cohen for us?
Yeah, I do have one, uh, more letter that came in via email today. Um, it is from a Brian and Heather Smith. They reside at Levinwood Avenue and they are expressing their support for the requested variance at 29 Wood Avenue. Other than that, no, I don't have anything, uh, additional to add unless you have specific questions.
Thank you very much. Well, that will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We've heard testimony that, uh, the, uh, size and configuration of the lot requires that an addition be, um, within the setbacks. And we have also heard testimony that this is the only way a third bedroom can be added to the building. Discussion, shall we start this one off with Mr. Wallner?
Thank you. I think, um, a three-bedroom house is a reasonable, uh, home to have in, in that neighborhood. Uh, certainly we heard testimony of the fact that that was certainly the characteristic of the neighborhood. There's no place to put this. Um, I think he's, uh, entitled to have, um, a third bedroom. And I think that the encroachment on the setback is minimal.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I agree. It, it, it's a very small lot. I mean, if you look at that map, almost every house on, in that area is, is, is in the setback because those lots were, you know, designed for houses that were much smaller. They've obviously in, increased with sizes, its living standards have increased. So I think that he, he still would have a relatively small house compared to most of the others on the neighborhood. I, I think it's a pretty modest expansion and, and I, I, I think it's a reasonable use.
Mr. Monahan?
Yeah, I'm gonna support it. I think the, um, uh, setback issue is fine. I do think we're creating a pretty overcrowded piece of, um, property here by going up to 51% lot coverage. Um, but I don't, I also know that it's not totally, it's, it's a kind of a dense neighborhood, so, um, I guess I'll go along with it.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
I agree with what everyone else said.
As do I. Is anyone interested in making a motion? Move approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? In that case, I will hold the board. Ms. Specter Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
Mr. Winters?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The variances are granted. And I believe that concludes our agenda for this evening. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Is everyone in favor?
I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't there.
Okay, I'll vote aye. Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
Mr. Winters?
Aye.
And Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
The minutes have been blessed. Is there any other business to come before us this evening, Craig?
Uh, no, I don't have anything on, uh, the agenda, so that's it for me.
I will bid you all a fond farewell.
Happy birthday, Chris. Happy birthday.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, now you're a septuagenarian.
Uh, yeah, sept, gee, wow.
Thanks, Nick.
Is this the first? My recollection is those are old guys.
Is this the first time your birthday's been celebrated at the ZBA?
Uh, well, it isn't actually today.
Oh, okay.
Uh, it was, it was March 10th.
Now, you know, your wife, uh, orchestrated.
Yes.
A, a, a windfall of cars to be mailed to her.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, it was, uh, it was, it was quite a performance. I wound up with a trailer truck backing up from the post office, dumping a couple of yards on the lawn and it was fun to see all the cars. Thanks, everybody.
Isaacman?
Very good time of care.
Bye.
Bye.